I don't know if I locked those doors and all, did you hear that horn?
I didn't.
We had glass on, right?
I don't know if that's true.
Stay with the date. Yes. Trouble with these are required.
Oh, oh. How about you?
He wasn't wearing his mask.
Yeah, he was. Why you run so straight across? He's in terrible condition. Why you fell on the floor before we got here?
I don't know.
You bent the middle. I'm trying to think of where. They're very much.
Okay.
Does it do?
I don't mind it. That's not supposed to be happening.
He won't be sitting in the. We have to have a litter chair.
Where's our?
Can't tell what I'm doing.
He almost. Which is. We'd see her fly landing straight go right. It looks like. In the camera. You don't have to say. You can just say sorry. I'm sorry, hey, it's not my fault. It's not. No, she's not here.
Maybe you could see the back of my leg from here. It's good news. I said that's the first time I've seen the back of my head. Because there's gel in it. But it's smooth. No, 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 that's what.
Can't even see me.
There's a whole bucket of freaking gel in my hair.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Monday, April 28, 2025 City Council meeting. It's nice to see so many people here. And we have more people waiting out in the lobby area because there are so many kids here from CCS and CHS tonight. Okay, so first on our agenda is roll call. Councilors Bagley and Kelly are absent. All other councilors are present.
Counselor Kelly is on Zoom.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Counselor Kelly is here. Hello? Strike that from the record. Okay.
That does not look like she's fully participating.
You don't think so? It's not fair. I get it.
No.
I get it. Okay, this evening, the invocation will be read by Deputy Mayor Smoove.
If everybody please bow their heads and join me and be in the attitude of prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment in making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen. And now if everybody would please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is a declaration of any conflict of interest. This pertains to the councilors here this evening. Does anybody have a conflict of interest? Seeing none, we will move on to item number six on the agenda, which is our public forum. Before we get started on public forum this evening, I would just like to remind everybody in the council chambers of the rules of procedure for public forum. So pursuant to Caribou Charter, Section 210A, Section B, there shall be a time slot of at least 15 minutes available at the beginning of each regularly scheduled meeting for input from residents or taxpayers of Caribou. The council will maintain a rule of procedure to allow public comment on agenda and non-agenda items at the start of each council meeting. All requests will be honored. So the procedure for that is, individuals wishing to address the councils shall do so during the time period established and in a manner as described. Individuals addressing the council shall give their name and address and shall limit their statements to not more than five minutes. The council chair at his or her discretion may allow more time to a speaker. Individuals wishing to appear on the council agenda to address the council shall contact the city manager no later than 5:00 PM on the Thursday before the council meeting that they wish to appear on the agenda. This is not a requirement to address the council during public input. All comments need to be addressed to the council at large and not to specific members. Questions shall be asked of individual council members only through the presiding officer. Discussion will be limited to council members and the person recognized as having the floor. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous, or exhibits inappropriate behavior while addressing the council may be instructed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer. Okay. So with that, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Please come on up and state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Hagelstein. I resident, a resident of Coolidge Avenue. A couple of things, and they pertain to last month's meeting when we were talking about the budget. In the packet of last month, there was a letter there requesting the department heads to do a 10% cut in each of their areas. Department heads were here, they spoke, they did explain what their cuts were. We had 9% cut, we had 8% cut, we had 2%, we had 3%. And that was kind of the end of it. The city council went along with that, and I'm sorry, they were directed for a 10% cut. Need to hold their feet to the fire on that. This is a tough year for everybody. I'm disappointed that the city council didn't hold them to the fire on that, and that needs to be done. And as far as doing that, I'm willing to volunteer my services to go through the budget and fine 10% in each department. I have no problem with that. The second thing is, it was brought up that there may have to be further adjustments to the city budget, depending on what the school budget is, and you may have to adjust. I just want to remind everybody, the school budget has nothing to do with the city. They're two separate entities. The only reason why it gets confused, and people think it's part of the city, is that the vehicle of collection is the tax bill. That's the only reason. If we really want to get a true understanding of what the costs are and what the mill rate is and so forth for each area is, why not have, meet with the school board and have them send out their own tax bill? Separate it off. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagelstein. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
I'm Michelle Blackstone, and I live at 170 Hardeston Road. I'm actually here speaking on my father's behalf, who lives on the Grimes Road. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. As many of you know, I express great frustration at the lack of response to the flood on the Grimes Road. Well, this was an unexpected event. It nonetheless happened, and several taxpaying residents were stranded for three days, surrounded by high floodwaters. My 78-year-old father included. This unfortunate event happened over a weekend, and obviously, the timing was poor. But emergencies don't always happen between Monday and Friday, at least not where we work and live. There was incredible drone footage, and a city municipality even drove up to take more pictures for social media that were posted, but no one contacted my father to make him aware, or any of the other residents, of the sudden rise in flood levels overnight to check if he needed anything, if there was any type of plan of reassurance, if he needed to be extricated. While postings were plastered on social media, my father doesn't have Facebook or access to any other social mediums. A simple phone call would have sufficed to warn him when the river came up and trap them overnight, kept them apprised of what was going on. I know in town, we have the Arista County Emergency Management Agency right in Caribou, with four full-time employees, to my knowledge, and several vehicles. It was explained, well, there seemingly was a lack of any response for the residents, until Monday morning, following my post. It was explained to me on Saturday evening by Akima that they needed to be contacted by the city manager in order to engage any type of action. No one responded until Monday, after I called. I've seen, watched endless trainings, emergency rescue simulations, interviews on WAGM. What is the purpose of these trainings? And God only knows how much money has been spent doing so. If when an actual emergency occurs, no one is there to help. As my grandmother would say, no one did a God-blessed thing until Monday morning, when the water had receded. The chief of police in Fort Fairfield was keeping all riverside residents updated and aware, starting on Friday through tax, and I myself saw their law enforcement keeping an in-person eye on the river. It's blatantly obvious that there is no clear plan in Caribou, and the ball was dropped by all involved. This actually would have been a fantastic opportunity for emergency services to shine and demonstrate the results of their multiple trainings, rather than being completely impervious to what was taking place in our city until Monday morning. It was extremely disheartening and disappointing to me as a taxpayer. Figuratively speaking, the buck was passed so many times, it was torn and tattered, and no one ever did step up to the register to cash it, fulfilling the expectation I feel is obligated as a resident and taxpayer. My hope going forward is a clear chain of command and accountability will be developed so this doesn't happen again. And ultimately, what is the emergency money, emergency services money being spent on? And what is the function of this agency? Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening and look forward to your follow-up regarding this matter.
Thank you for sharing that.
Make sure she gets coffee.
Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
Sure.
Come on up and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Alexi Kaliva. I'm a resident from Caribou, and I live on 761 Main Street. So today, I'm here to speak on the behalf of our small town. As most of us are aware, this town has multiple failed businesses. Business owners have not been fortunate enough to withstand economic stressors that are alive and well today, more than ever. We are without many opportunities to have sustainable jobs, lucrative revenue, medicine, and economical growth. Richardson Remedies has provided all of the above and beyond. I have firsthand witnessed camaraderie, solidarity, and one of the best customer services provided in the town of Caribou. This local business is helping fund a mudbowl that gets families, friends, and vendors together to create an environment that this town needs. On the Fourth of July, this business has faithfully made sure the less fortunate folks and locals that don't have funds to travel don't miss out on an Independence Day fireworks show. Please do not let this go on deaf ears today. Richardson Remedies is more than a medical marijuana shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up and state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott Walker. Live on 10 Solomon Street here in Caribou. I'm here to talk about a tax abatement on a piece of property at 465 Main Street. My understanding was this was going to be addressed in executive session. Am I mistaken about that?
I didn't get anything for executive session.
Well, when I spoke to you, you said it had to be addressed in executive session, that my abatement was good only for the year 2024, but reading in the state law, I could go back three years, and you said that it had to be addressed in executive session.
So for that, you would have to have submitted an application.
I sat right at your desk, and you put me on the agenda.
Because I didn't, there are different kinds of abatement. If it's for a valuation adjustment, it would be in public session. If it's a, an abatement for poverty or hardship, then that's what is in an executive session.
Okay, well, when Joe Sully came to do the assessment, I had been asking for this since 2021. When I bought the property in 2020, the entity that owned it prior to me was Business Investment Group, which is not, they don't have to pay property tax. Joe and Swolberg and I had the conversation, and he said, if I were you, that property's not worth any more than the 30 grand that you paid for it, so I would ask for an abatement. So it's been from early '21 until now that I've been asking for this. Joe Sully finally come up there last summer, didn't even go inside the building, and wrote it down to like 40-something, and then you said you would take care of it for 2024. Anything prior to that would have to be addressed to the council.
Right, and if it's a matter of valuation, then it's in open session.
Okay. So where do we proceed from? From here?
Well, I have a, I have a memo in here that has where Joe talks about the abatement for 2024 and the recommended abatement.
Yeah.
If you were asking for previous years, then you would need to bring some proof of why it should be reduced for '23 and '22.
Well, his, his devaluation of the property is not proof enough, when I've been asking for it since 2021?
Well, that's what you can enter in, and that's what you can tell them, and they can decide from there if they.
Okay, so should I stand here before you tonight and ask for consideration for abatement for '23, '22, and '21? Is that, is that what I'm to do?
You can ask for that.
Okay, so when will that be responded to?
So this is in public input, and they can take it up later in the meeting.
Okay.
What I can do, Mr. Walker, why don't we plan to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, so that we'll have time to look at this?
When are you thinking that's going to be in May?
Our next meeting is not until, oh, what is the date?
May 27?
Yeah, the 27th of May.
It requires a second session.
Yeah, okay. You don't, you don't think you can do it at the end of this meeting tonight?
Probably not. Nope, because we're probably going to need a little bit more information. But we can certainly plan to have it on that next agenda for you.
All right, yeah, we'll do that. So do I just check with Penny to make sure I'm on the agenda?
Yes.
Now, when I called this afternoon, as of 4:30 this afternoon, nothing's changed on the 2024 as of yet.
No, because we're having a Board of Assessors meeting on May 7.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity and for your service, councilors. Jim Seer in Caribou. I just would speak on the implementation of the laws passed by the legislature in 2024. I don't know all the details about that. I'll just simply advocate that Caribou continues to do what it's done, which is to interpret the laws and the guidelines out of Augusta as strictly as possible. We are a community that has a reputation of being family-friendly, and I bring a lot of experience from many different angles to this issue, and we certainly appreciate all our businesses and all the support that they offer to the community. However, I urge the council to continue to do what it's done up to date, which is to limit to the highest degree possible the available, the public availability and the location and the, the manner in which Caribou implements laws related to marijuana, in that we think of our kids. And I, I think that our neighbor to the south has decided to go down a different road, and the results are very clear at this point. We've got a decade's worth of results to draw on as to what that brings and what that experiment looks like. So there's ample hard evidence as to why the approach Caribou has taken is correct, and I think will continue to be correct, and I urge you to stand strong in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Oh, there's someone coming in. Next.
Hey there, and good evening. Thank you guys for your service, and my name is Jennifer Belcher. I'm the president of the Maine Cannabis Union, which is an affiliate of the IAMAW, the machinist union. And I'm here to speak on behalf of one of our members, as well as a union shop, about the medical cannabis ordinance. I think that there's been some confusion along the way in regards to this. This would not change anything that the wonderful town of Caribou has already done. This would bring, at this point, the state of Maine and OCP and Augusta has changed their language since 2010-ish, when you had originally done your ordinance. Their law and their language has changed, and in order to operate in the town, there needs to be compliance there, that mirror and images, the laws that the state of Maine put forth. So the state of Maine, at the current time, because of the way it's written, doesn't meet with the statutes of the law. And as confusing as this can be at times, I have, I think in our email, that an information and summary about this was presented to you folks.
It's in the packet.
Okay. So as confusing as it is in terms of these laws and statutes and how it all lines up, if we were to bring the ordinance into compliance with state law, it would not change anything in the town. Nothing, they wouldn't add new shops, it wouldn't add the availability for new stores to open up, or anything along those lines. It would allow for the current shops in the state that they're in, as they operate, would continue to remain the same, but the thing is, is it would apply, it would be concurrent with state law. In order for a caregiver to continue to renew their, to renew their card every year, OCP, Office of Cannabis Policy, has put a new requirement. The town has to sign off. They have to sign off to say that this person was a caregiver prior to 2018. They have to sign off and say that we have an ordinance, if that caregiver wants to operate in the town. So that's where you have to have a statute that meets the state law. So that's what we are trying to do here. It's not that we're trying to change anything, it's not that we're trying to kind of act like Holton and flood it with new shops or anything like that. We're just trying to follow state law. And to do this, it would involve something as simple as a couple word changes. If it was the dispensary language that wants to stay, then it would be something as simple as changing some zoning, so that the current stores can operate where they're at. So something as simple as small changes can bring everything into compliance. That's been the biggest piece of this. It's not that everything's going to change and it's going to blow up like Bangor is. and it's going to blow up like Bangor is and be all these shops on every corner. Honestly, anything that was proposed here strictly keeps everything as is and the same. Um, it's just within compliance, which is really important for us as a union, a union shop, and also as caregivers and business owners. Um, we are hoping that, uh, the wonderful town of Caribou will work with us and we're willing to answer questions about this. Um, my business and myself, I'm kind of an expert in this area. Um, I have worked with many, many towns across the state of Maine and we continue to. There's four other town meetings happening tonight um, that we have addressed and worked with to overcome these hurdles. And like I said, most stuff is not changing. It's just a matter of coming into compliance with the hurdles that OCP puts upon us. And I'm willing to answer any questions if people have questions. Um, and we also have signatures as well of people in the town that would like this to change. Um, just briefly, a bunch of signatures we were able to get, papers of signatures as well. Um, so we do have a lot of people that are kind of behind this and coming into compliance.
Thank you. And actually, if you could leave that packet of materials with Danielle, that would be really helpful.
Absolutely. Yes, um, yes, and the, um, and like I said, the particular shop being talked about here, they're willing to do whatever it takes with the town from the, whether it's to go to a dispensary and fill out that paperwork to be compliant with the dispensary. But in your rule, in the ordinance, it does say nonprofit dispensary. And regardless of how anything goes, there is no, you can't have a nonprofit in cannabis. Um, so that language itself would need to change too because it puts everybody out of compliance that exists currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Oh, I said you were next, didn't I? Please. Come on up, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Louis Constant. Uh, I live in Washburn and I'm the owner of Sweeper's Cleaning Company. And I go to one of the dispensaries in Caribou. And, um, this is my first time attending one of the meetings, so it's fairly new to me. But, um, I would like to make a testimony in regards that, uh, it's a great location. You know, I'm not going to say any names or anything, but...
Sir, I do have to stop you because we only are allowed to let taxpayers of the city of Caribou speak during public forum.
That's not a problem. You can sign the petition. Is that okay?
I'm sorry, what was that?
There was a petition or something that was signed by individuals?
Yeah. Or a tax, or a taxpayer. I'm so sorry about that.
Okay, that's not a problem at all. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak, ma'am? Have to come on up and state your name and address.
Rhona Hart from Caribou. I will run 18 Roosevelt. Uh, Richardson's. It's not just a place to go just because you want it. They've become not just friends, but family. I lost my mom to suicide. I nearly committed suicide until Richardson's come along and helped me. They got me straightened out. I had gotten hooked on OxyContin. Now I'm terrified of taking it. They have given me back what I thought I had lost. Depression, anxiety. That was all falling down. I lost my husband. I lost my father-in-law two days later. I lost two brother-in-laws a couple months later. Then I lost my brother. If it weren't for them, they'd call me just to check up on me to see if there's anything that they can do or say. They're not just there to look at you, they're there to listen. And that's what they've done for me. They've given me back my hope. This past year, I've got a heart condition. I have breast cancer. And I'm afraid to go to sleep at night. But with some of his remedies, they help calm things down and put your mind back in perspective. And that's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
Yes. My name is Lisa Groff and I live at 11 Roosevelt Avenue here in Caribou. Um, I'm a cancer survivor. And I have post-traumatic stress disorder. And, uh, Richardson Remedies is a medical marijuana shop that provides medical-grade, um, cannabis. And, um, fentanyl is a lot bigger problem than marijuana in, uh, Arista County. Um, and as a cancer survivor with a medical card at the house, I really believe that having a dispensary that is a family-based dispensary, giving honest, um, alternatives for prescription cannabis, having it available in town is important for people who suffer from tumors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
Do you have any more, Don? I just need a minute.
That's fine. Come on up and state your name and address.
I am James Bacon, 173 Washburn Street. I have, I used to have a body shop over there. But, uh, I was just coming. I was told to come down and talk to you guys about seeing, about me. I'm on the AU side of marijuana cultivation. I'm a cultivator for AU side. That's adult-use marijuana. And I've been told over the last two or three years that I can't be zoned for at my shop where I used to be. Sorry, but, uh, I was just wondering if you guys would consider me using my shop to do cultivate and I do AU, uh, AU, I'm an AU cultivator, which is quite a bit different than the medical side of it. I'm just a cultivator. I sell to retail. So most of my product doesn't even stay here anyway. Just wanted to come in and I had some stuff that I'd like somebody to just to look at as, as we... I've emailed a few times and to see if you guys, but that's all I wanted to say. If there'd be a consideration for me to do it at my shop. I'm doing it in Prescott now. But I'm just planning on expanding to somewhere. So that's what I'm, just, and I have a shop there. I quit doing bodywork in '23. Uh, lots of different, different things, but, uh, I've tried to sell, to sell the building over the last two and a half years. I haven't had one person look at it. I did get, end up getting somebody in the back for a lease, but I'd like to use the front of the building for me. I'm renting in Prescott now. I'd rather use my building in Caribou. If I don't, well, I'm probably going to end up losing the building because I can't use it and I can't sell it. So that's all I wanted to talk to you guys tonight and I just wanted to, I just leave this over with Danielle.
Yes, if you can leave that with Danielle, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
I guess I can say so.
Sure, why not?
All right, my name's Darrell Richardson from Richardson Remedies. I own a caregiver retail store in Caribou. But because of the laws change, I need you guys' permission to continue to run. I was doing this for over 10 years and I'm not trying to like expand or anything. I'm just trying to continue as is. I'm out the public way. I'm out in the cut. So it's not like everybody sees it. I just want to get y'all guys' permission so I can just continue to run as I've been running. You know what I mean? And, um, that's pretty much it. If I can't do a caregiver retail store, if you can consider me being a dispensary, kind of like a safe alternative and zone my area, because I'm not trying to do rec, I just do strictly medical. I have a lot of cancer patients and medical patients that rely on me and my services. So I just wanted to continue for them. So if y'all could consider it, just please look at the ordinance or the paperwork and, yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alrighty. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Oh, we are getting, this will have to be the last speaker because we are past the...
You're running out of time.
Yeah.
My name is Sandra Hill. I'm also with the Maine Cannabis Union. I'm the treasurer with it. Um, I think it's important to acknowledge, we do have a bill in that we are trying to have 10% of the revenues go back to each of the municipalities in the state of Maine. We think it's unfair that you're not being able to receive fees back to you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. And we have several different sets of minutes that we need to approve this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Move the slate.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That was easy. Okay. All right. Item number eight on the agenda is bid openings, awards, and appointments. And we have several people to recognize this evening. And our first, um, organization that we're going to be recognizing is the Civil Air Patrol, um, the Billy Mitchell Award recipients this evening. So we have some folks here in the front row. And I'm going to have Deputy Mayor Smith read a little bit about you folks before I hand out some awards.
It's excellent to see you here this evening. My pleasure. Uh, on Wednesday, April 23rd, the city manager was pleased to attend a ceremony held at the VFW in Caribou, which honored four Civil Air Patrol members who received the Brigadier General Billy Mitchell Award to commemorate their completion of Phase Two of the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program. This award recognizes sustained excellence in all four areas of cadet life, meaning leadership, aerospace, fitness, and character. There's more about this award on the following page. At the ceremony last week, the cadets were joined by Colonel Mark Highland, the wing commander. They received sentiments from Maine Governor Janet Mills, both houses of the Maine Legislature, U.S. Representatives Jared Golden and Shelley Pengry, and United States Senators Angus King and Susan Collins. This evening, the city council would like to commend these cadets for their achievement. And have you got the names?
I do, yes. This is so wonderful. Okay, so the first person we would like to recognize is Reese Lister.
We'll get some pictures at the end here.
Wait, wait, wait. Let's do this, there we go.
Well, you could have, but I'm good.
Yeah, he's got... This is hard work, isn't it?
I torture these people routinely in the summertime.
Oh, you do? Okay. I was wondering about that.
And Ian Lister?
This is my crew.
Is there a trail?
Yeah.
We can do this smoothly. Here we go.
Well, you can make some comments on that.
Okay, well, we got, yeah.
Absolutely. Looking great, high and tight tonight, for sure.
Congratulations. And Gloria Dion. And AJ Mirswa. Congratulations. Yes, that'll be great. Actually, if you want to come stand up here in front of the council, they'll hop in the picture too.
I'll block everyone out.
They'll, they'll figure out. They'll...
Wore my heels today.
We'll get Joe to stand on a chair.
Yes, I know.
Perfect.
It'll be okay. Joe and I will.
Need hydraulics for that.
Oh, wait, hold on. Manager Thompson needs her turn.
I said no better than that, so.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much for giving the time to do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, I would.
He does.
Oh.
He does.
Well, I was actually asking Mrs. Lister, but...
I don't think so. Uh, we go back quite a ways and I don't want to steal her thunder. So let me, let me shut off my mic from here because I prefer to do it down there.
Absolutely. Wait for a minute.
Um, you guys know me, so. The city councilor. Sorry. A little dry here. This is my crew. I'm joking here. I'm really sorry. Um, when we started VFW, these guys came. I'm not, I should have got a drink before I came down. Um, when we started, we were a small group. We were what, 60 people? You lead the way. No problem. I just wish I could have done that without choking.
If you'd like to.
My name is Christine Lister. I live on East Prescott, around in Caribou. Um, it's been a great honor to be, uh, what we call a senior member, to be a mentor and volunteer to serve these, um, community members because that's what they are. Um, and we are very fortunate that in our squadron, we have, I think nearly 75% of our cadets are from the city of Caribou and the immediately surrounding areas. Um, I know you've seen us around. We've tried to make ourselves available for community service, which is one of our core missions. And, um, you know, having this recognition for their hard work and the several teenagers that are coming up behind them means a great deal. Um, we've gone from a very small squadron of about maybe four or five cadets and, and we are in the mid twenties and should be, um, could just continue. We're actually running out of room in our current, uh, accommodations. But it's not even summer yet. But I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging that their hard work. Um, they don't often get opportunities to come before, um, mature people and be able to, um, you know, relay their thanks for your belief in them and then, uh, you know, take that with them. So, um, I won't take up any of your more time, but thank you very much for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Since I'm done choking, I would like to finish my comment. These guys are awesome. When we started, and I apologize for choking, but when we started, we were a very small group. We were about like 10, 12 people. And we were doing parades. And these guys put their whole heart and soul into the operation. And because of them, we've been to just about every parade that walks. Um, they have been a great reflection, uh, to the veterans and to the Veterans Auxiliary. Not only that, to also to the American Legion. They've also participated and to the point where they're almost as well-recognized as we are when we go to different areas. And they're expected, and that's a little bit of guilt. They're expected to run with us this summer when we do the parade circuit again. They're one of the most sought-after groups of young people. And I think that's a true reflection on their individuality and ability to work as a team. So that should have came out, but I was choking. I want to say, you know, thank you again. Um, look forward to working with you this summer. Lots of great plans. Um, did you kill a bagpipe player?
No, he's, he's now a doctor, I believe, so, or he's in pre... He floats around here.
You know, the young man we're referring to plays the bagpipes and he's self-taught. God bless his parents for tolerating that while he was learning.
Yeah.
But he did an awesome job. And again, is just, you know, part of the multifaceted group. Uh, I don't think people understand, these guys are actually the Air Force Auxiliary. And they stand with the Congressional Charter, which in itself is truly awesome, that they would step up to that mantle this early in their life and continue on with it. So again, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I love that you travel with a lint brush. I should really think about doing that. Yes. Okay. Next, we'll be recognizing the CCS show choir. I'm going to grab them. Thank you.
This one, right here. Yeah, show choir.
Yes.
Can you mention the, um, the people who got the musicianship awards for this group?
What's that?
Just kind of separately.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I can do the, okay.
Just, yeah, those three.
The asterisk three?
Yep.
Yep. I was on it earlier, so. Patiently waiting.
Yes, this has been, um, quite an eventful meeting so far. Come on in, it's gonna be a little bit cramped, but we'll make it work.
They gonna sing for us tonight?
I was hoping, but I don't think so. I don't think so.
So shame.
We probably don't have the right acoustics.
They can sing Rainbow Stew by Merle Haggard. That wouldn't be a good one, no. All kinds of different ones. Yeah, they can line up. There's all kinds of room here, get them all in here.
Yeah, squeeze in wherever you can find a little spot. And if you, you can even stand back in that section if that works for you. Some space over by Mr. Rosser over here. See, this is a good problem to have, there's so many of you. You can't even fit in the room. I love this.
Oh, they're still coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gather.
That's the best way to grab it. There's a plethora.
Can even squeeze back here behind Manager Thompson, if you wanna slide that way, maybe.
Make sure everybody gets some.
Make sure everyone can get in. All right. Are we all here? Okay. Deputy Mayor Smith, would you like to talk to us about this amazing group of kids we have here?
Absolutely. If Caribou keeps bringing home more gold, we're gonna have to get a. Get a bigger vault, you know.
We have a brings truck.
Have a brings truck, yeah. Follow everybody back from downstate. This is some of the best part of our meetings. Caribou citizens have a lifelong interest in all aspects of music. Their love of music is often instilled through our Caribou School Department with programs like bands, strings, and choir. From an early age, young people sing in their church choir and start dance lessons at the Maine Dance Academy. Over the years, several national acts have played at the Caribou Performing Arts Center and on Thursdays on Sweden Street. Local bands play to an enthusiastic crowd. It is safe to say that performing is a passion shared by many in our community. This Caribou City Council is pleased to welcome members of the Caribou Community School Show Choir to be recognized for their dedication to this vibrant music program that combines singing with choreographed dancing. Your success continues the longstanding tradition of show choir and jazz choir in the Caribou school system, thanks to talented and devoted program staff, students, and advisors. Your commitment to learning the songs and dance routine and hours of practice paid off with a gold. Here we go. At the state-level competition. It is also an acknowledgement of the parents who devote a significant amount of time and effort into promoting their child's participation in musical theater. From providing rises snacks for practice, sewing costumes, and listening to the same songs hundreds of times, to cheering on the performances downstate, it's the parents who provide love and encouragement for this high level of creativity and self-expression. In addition to Team Gold, Caribou, the CCS Show Choir won the Choreography Award, and several musician awards came home to Caribou. And one of those will be Bailey Cochran, Bella Belier, and Benson Blanger. And we note those as they received a Musicianship Award at the state championship, and now Mayor Boa is gonna present some awards for you.
I am, but first, I'm gonna go completely off-script to say that I was actually at the state performance, and it was phenomenal. These kids were amazing, and I couldn't be more proud. Okay, so here's what we're going to do, because we're a big group. So I'm going to hand out certificates to all of you, and then we'll all come up and do a group picture together at the end. Does that sound good? All right, so first up is Sadie Hunter. Congratulations. Emma Gray. Congratulations, Emma. Mallory Maynard. Congratulations. Kaitlin Stedman. Isabella Albert. Michaela Reinbold. She's gonna make it this evening. Okay, we'll save this right here for her. Morgan Leahy. Congratulations. Meredith Leahy. Congratulations. Izzy Goodwin. Benson Blanger. Okay.
They had a community band.
Hey, that's okay. Marleya Stevens. Congratulations. Brooklyn Bootah. Bailey Cochran. Congratulations. Haley Johnson. Georgianne Anderson. Congratulations. Evan Hamilton. Congratulations, Evan. Elizabeth Powers. Jack Gibson. Congratulations, Jack. Kayden Simone. Oh, did I pronounce that correctly?
You did.
Oh, okay. Lexi Willett. Naveya Anderson. That's okay, all right. Isabella Belier. Quinn Gervais. Congratulations. Alexa Gaye. Congratulations. Sophie Bowyer. Congratulations. Camilla Boma. Congratulations. Georgia Raymond. Okay. Ava Rosser. Adeline Powers. Congratulations. Peyton Wing. Okay. Emma Adams. Congratulations, Emma. And we also have two awards, one for Director Amy Hunter. Congratulations. And one for Amy Stedman. Congratulations. Okay, so now the time has come for our giant group picture. So here's what we're going to do. All right, I gotta think about this now. Okay, we're gonna try to squeeze in up here, but we're gonna pull these chairs around, ladies. We're gonna put some chairs in the front.
Can we do it the other way and get the town of Caribou picture?
Yeah.
We could do that if the council would come back that way.
I'm just, because everybody's there.
We can do that, that's fine. Yep. Okay. Sorry, everyone. Make a little space for a minute. That was a very smart idea, Deputy Mayor. Okay. Okay, all of our CCS students, musicians, can we come over this way? Yep. You're fine. I think, I think.
Counselors in the back.
Yeah, counselors in the back.
Said the grandfather.
But students can squish around council, too. That's fine.
That sounds good.
I think the short counselors should stand on the chairs.
I was wondering.
I thought about it.
We might get the chairs dirty. Mrs. Hunter and Mrs. Stedman, you need to be in the picture, too.
All right, is everyone, are they sitting still? Do you want those sitting?
Yeah, I think maybe, just, uh, well, I don't know. This row, maybe, stand. Let's see how it looks from the phototakers. They're gonna tell us what to do. How's that?
We need everybody on the end to just kinda smoosh in as close as you can.
We're all gonna be showered.
They're tall.
They are tall.
I'm in heels, and they're taller than me.
I'm gonna stand on my tippy toes. Good thinking, Mrs. Hunter. Good thinking.
Do we need more up front? But that's good. So Paul, how about you? Can you see everybody's face? I can't see Joan.
Can't see Joan? Joan, they can't see you.
You need to get a little closer to Paul, Joan.
Yep, yep, see? There's a swat right there. Yeah, you're busted.
Tippy toes, tippy toes. Hi, Paul. We're very close right now.
I know, it's a good thing we're all showering.
Hey, parents, has everybody got their picture?
Hold on, everybody, please.
Okay, everybody hold.
My mom and my mayor boys.
It's not doing. Beth, thank you.
Right, everybody got a picture that wants one? Okay. Thank you so much. Congratulations to you all. What an accomplishment.
Oh, no problem. This is a fun part of the day. I would. Hey. Here's the deal. Who, let me shut this off for just a second, because I don't want this going out over the air.
Yeah. Still stuff going on for these kids, my goodness.
Isabel La.
You're welcome, thanks for coming. Yes, absolutely, this was great. Oh. Sadie?
You're okay?
Oh, your mom's right there. You can take those, okay. All right. Why don't you two shift back, because the other group's coming in. I love you girls, but.
That was a good-sized group.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
This is good stuff.
I love this.
Yeah, this makes it all worth it.
Okay.
Stand on a chair, give me.
You can just come around to the front.
You think so? After I break my leg?
I'm rolling a spot, yeah.
All right.
There's more coming. They've all been waiting out there, huh? Patiently.
No, now we got the jazz choir.
They were patiently waiting backstage, right?
You guys have been very patient, because this has been a long meeting so far, so I appreciate that.
In a good way. You didn't ask them for.
Oh, yeah.
Fight night, no.
I like it, I like that.
I wish we do more.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. So the next group that we're recognizing this evening is the Caribou High School Jazz Choir. And again, I'm going to have Deputy Mayor Smith read a little bit about you folks, and then we've got some awards.
Excellent, excellent work, group.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, you want.
Don't worry about it.
Okay. The Caribou City Council is pleased to welcome members of the Caribou High School Jazz Choir to be recognized for their dedication to evaluating their musical performance and interpretation skills. Students, advisors, your perfect harmony and hours of practice paid off with another gold at the state-level competition for the jazz choir. A signature feature of the jazz choir is the rhythm section, so we also give our thanks to Rebecca Willey, Jennifer Holmes, and, pronounced the name correctly, Kajenel?
Jatiel.
Jatiel, okay, sorry. Apologize on that. Rosagnol, for the part they played in the success of these students. Sincere appreciation goes to the parents and other family members of those talented student performers. It has been said that the community is a strong supporter of the musical arts in the Caribou schools, from donating set supplies to food, to traveling to cheer on the choirs during their competition. The value of this support cannot go unrecognized. In addition to earning a Team Gold at the state competition, the Caribou High School Jazz Choir won several Musicianship Awards for Aiden St. Pierre, Heather Guston, Madison Tebow, and Zadali Violet.
Thank you. Okay, so now is the time we've all been waiting for. I have some certificates for you folks, so we'll have you come up and get certificates, and then we'll take a big group picture at the end, if that works for you all. Okay, first up is Chloe Boma. Aiden St. Pierre. Madison Tebow. Kaitlin Gross. Congratulations, Kaitlin. Heather Guston. Maggie Bell. Dean Gibson. Liz Robbins. Sadie Lee Violet. Congratulations. Madeline Cody. Charlotte Plord. Oh, she's not here. Trevor LaPlante. Cassidy Sossier. Emmett Singer. Okay. Jaden Holmes. And Amy Hunter. Oh, okay.
Yes, she's here still, I thought she left.
Miss Stedman. Okay, so, let's see. How do we, I think this group picture, we can probably fit up here. So if you folks wanna come this way, and squeeze in, we'll have the council stand up. She may. We were gonna give you the opportunity to say something at the end, too. I should've done that.
Oh, I'm okay.
Okay, all right.
We're so very thankful for your support. We're happy to be here.
Oh, if I try to stand up there, I'm gonna hurt myself. I'm not gonna do that. Okay.
This time. Yeah, this time, way out.
Hold them, yeah, absolutely.
Jody is not fair to you, but.
It doesn't matter who you sit between.
Oh, hang on, Miss Stedman wants a picture, too. Anybody else need a picture before we disband here? Okay. All right. Thank you all for being here, congratulations. Oh, Mrs. Hunter.
Yep.
Stack, you're welcome.
Are you not gonna play the music?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, you guys can just go find it.
Strike a beat?
What's that?
We can strike a beat or something, and they could go see.
We're not gonna pin him on the spot, we probably have terrible acoustics here.
You keep using that alibi.
Wouldn't ask me to sing.
I'm thinking, swing and a miss.
I know, right? Like them to see this, this is a civic responsibility. Okay. They're getting close. Okay, next on our agenda is the Public Works Materials Results of Bid Openings. This is on page fifty-five of your packet. Okay.
And yeah, Dave's here.
Dave, did you wanna come up?
If you've got questions, I'd be more glad to. I'll go up. There's all the questions.
I can just get back. So the Public Works Department solicited bids for materials that have been budgeted for use in 2025. And so we do have the details and the items and the bid amounts of all of those, and the low bids are given in red. Does anybody have questions?
Yeah, I went through this earlier, and I think in the past, the only one I had a question about was the, these are all local companies, now Lanes, I guess, but still Presquale, was the street paint, about fourteen-hundred dollar difference, I think in the past, we've awarded that to a local company instead of Franklin Paint out of Franklin, Massachusetts. That's the only one I would, and would recommend. That's the only one I would recommend not to take the low bid on, but that's up to the council to decide. The rest are pretty competitive bids. Yeah, I mean, I mean, everybody's within, it showed last year, thank you for doing that, because everybody's within. There was no, there was no big difference, I mean, it was competitive, so...
Last year, there was about a thousand dollars difference between Franklin Paint and Haney's. This year, there's a little bit more of a spread. And I'm all for local vendors.
For that amount.
But it does create a little bit more work for us, and I just think I'm gonna explain it. When we buy it from Franklin Paint, we buy fifty-five gallon drums. We take the two-inch bun, we put a stirrer in there, and we can stir that drum for twenty minutes. No mess, no fuss, no nothing. With Mr. Haney's, it's all on five-gallon pails. So you have the choice of dumping the pails into an old drum and stir the drum altogether, or you have to try to stir the five-gallon pails. And it is a little bit wasteful, but I also understand that it is a local vendor. Choice is yours.
Just one more question, too, because I was pleased to see, because I was looking at the JBBC sand.
Yeah.
And it said they were willing to deliver.
Yes.
I, that's huge for that price, and I mean, as far as if we want to talk local, like, consider everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
North of Smyrna Mill's local, but...
So if we look at it, it was eighteen-twenty-five last year from Trombley's.
Yeah.
But the part you don't see is the winner this year bid twenty dollars and fifty cents for his sand last year. So you can see he's brought that down three dollars eighty cents compared to last year, and it is delivered. And we do random samples, we're checking, it's really highly sophisticated, a peanut butter jar with some water. Not everyone knows how to do that.
Now we do.
Yeah. If you put some of the sand in there, and the water on top, and you shake it, and you let it sit overnight, you can see how many finds are on top. And it's not scientific, but it's pretty close for what we do. So random check here and there. We've had really good luck with Trombley's, and I suspect that the other vendor will be just fine, too.
So just to clarify, the Franklin Paint Company, that's actually less work and less money for you guys?
It is, but I don't know that that should be the deciding factor.
Well, I'm just wanting to, yeah, so you have a recommendation on that?
We've used both, I have no complaints with the Paint for Haney's, I mean... But you think about this, you have to dump eleven pails over into a drum in order to stir it, or you stir eleven pails. There's a lot of the mess, there's a lot of... You know, if you try to stir eleven pails versus one drum, they're all open containers. You use a big drill, and you stir it, and it gets spilled, and when you pull the stirring out, it drips. So it's almost impossible to stir each pail. So if you want to take the time, you can dump into a funnel from the five-gallon pails, and you know, you can let it sit there for a few minutes and drain, or you can even scrape the pail to get it out versus a drum that is delivered. And you unscrew the two-inch bun, and you put the air screw in it, and it's done. So it's a lot less work. Last year, it was, Haney's was a thousand dollars more, we had never used five-gallon pails. We didn't know about the quality of the paint. I can tell you that I think the quality was as good as anything we've ever used. The... The labor is a lot more intensive than pails.
Okay.
We have the crew there, we're using them regardless. It ain't like we're having to hire two more people so we can stir the pails. It's so close, I'm gonna leave this up to you guys.
Okay. All right, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion. Let me do this one, Phil, so... I'll make a motion that we accept the cover bids from Paris Farmers. So for seventeen thousand one fifty-eight. We accept the bid from Haney Building Supply in the amount of twelve thousand five eighty-four thirty for street paint. We accept the bid Shim and Patch for the two thousand twenty-five year from Lane Construction at the price of eighty-one dollars. And I believe that's per ton. The Country Paving, two thousand five award to Trombley Industries of Limestone, Maine. Oh, excuse me, excuse me, I had the wrong one. If you Lane Construction, Prescott, Maine, in the amount of ninety-one forty per ton. The In-Town Paving, we award to Trombley Industries, the amount of ninety-seven sixty-five per ton. And the two thousand twenty-five sand, we award to JBBC Sand, Fort Kent, Maine, for sixteen forty-five a ton.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there further discussion?
I'm still just a little bit held up on that, making the... I mean, I really want to give all local people these contracts, but, you know, to force these guys to take their time to do these things, you know, that might be more wasteful, and they could maybe be using that time for something else. I'm just a little bit concerned about that. I mean, I'm sure it's not, this is not a huge issue, so I'm not wanting to take a bunch of time on it, but just to reiterate that point, that we're saying, hey, we want to have you spend all this time dumping these little buckets into another bucket. So time is money, so it's not just the price difference there, you're talking about the hours difference and the other jobs that need to be done that we're taking away from, and those kind of things, so... Just, that's my two cents.
I think I would also kind of question or have a conversation maybe with Mr. Haney. Is there some way that he could get the product to be delivered in the other?
We tried that.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, there is pails for them.
Okay. Okay.
And we'll use them. You know, I'm okay with it, it just does make more work, there's no question about it.
Further discussion? Okay. Kelly.
Hi.
Lovewell.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Terrio.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries.
I would like to just make one correction, if I could, just so we're all on the same page. And it's my fault, it's not Lane's Construction, it's Northeast Paving.
Okay.
Yeah, I did see that on the...
We're with you.
Shame on me.
This is your last one, right? This is your last?
Well, so you have a meeting before I leave, and I may come just to grasp you a little bit.
Perfect, we hope so.
We hope so.
Thank you.
I'll nap prior, so...
Okay.
I'll nap prior.
Item number... I can't read my writing here. Eight E, appointments to fill open board and committee positions, this is on page seventy-one of your packet. So there are two appointments to be made to citizen committees, one on the Caribou Riverfront Redevelopment Committee and one on the Citizens Airport Advisory Committee. These will fill positions that are currently vacant due to the resignation of Andrea Fleanery. The city has received applications from the citizens below to fill the positions. One for the Caribou Riverfront Redevelopment Committee by Ken Murchison. And one for the Citizens Airport Advisory Board for Shane McDougall.
So there was just a resignation, okay, there wasn't positions we didn't fill in January, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay, I got it. We just said resignation.
We did. So what are the wishes of the council?
Motion to appoint Ken Murchison to the Caribou Riverfront Development Committee, term expiring on all thirty-one twenty-five. And Citizens Airport Advisory Board, appoint Shane McDougall, term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Kelly.
Hi.
Lovewell.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Terrio.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Okay, item number eight F, unsolicited bids on tax-acquired properties received on page seventy-two of your packet. There have been discussions since the Tyler versus Hennepin County Supreme Court decision about the properties that have been tax-acquired by the city of Caribou prior to that decision. After that decision, the city has been waiving foreclosure on tax-acquired properties. The city has continued to receive interest in the properties currently held. Graydon Mahoney has expressed interest in fifteen Nancy Street because he owns a neighboring property. Additionally, the Northern Financial Home Mortgage Corporation has offered to purchase several properties which are listed on the following page, page seventy-three. Unfortunately, the state has dictated a process to sell properties that have been acquired through the automatic lien foreclosure process. Since the city of Caribou has not gone through this process on these properties, they cannot be sold at this time. Further, we should come up with a plan to deal with our tax-acquired property situation.
Yeah, I've talked about this previously, I won't labor it too much, I ran on this kind of my campaign for reelection, that we need to get in line with the state, the state deal. We talked about it previously, and then we were waiting for potential new legislation. I don't agree with waiving foreclosure any more than we have to. Obviously, we can't sell these tax-acquired properties because we're not on the compliance. But should we come up with a plan to deal with this? Yes, we absolutely should.
Yep.
And I think the first step on that would be, and it doesn't, and my, correct me if I'm wrong on this, because you had sent some testimony in on this, correct? And I don't know where it's in the hopper at that level, I haven't followed it, but it probably is not going to immediately change. It doesn't look that way, I guess, from what I've seen, so... We don't have to do this evening, but we need to... I guess the first step is we're gonna have to put an RFQ out for a realtor. If we want to... I mean, and these are, you know, there's sixteen properties here, and if somebody from, obviously from Massachusetts is gonna buy them, but they're gonna hopefully pay the taxes on it, and some of these are probably not really desirable properties. I didn't look them all up, but they're probably a little corner, maybe, or...
Some of them are nice properties.
They are?
Yeah, some of them would be very desirable properties.
Okay, so I haven't, I just read this this morning, so that's a good...
But there are some, you know, that are tough with cases.
Always, it's always when we deal with this. So this is, this is kind of where I want to go with this, I don't think... Maybe we can discuss this on the agenda the next meeting, what we want to move forward. You know, getting that... I think the next step is get a realtor involved. Is that, is that some of the...
We can, I mean...
I don't know how we do it, but...
So other towns have done it, so you would enter into a contract with a real estate agent to list all these properties. But it's not, they're not properties in most cases that they're that excited about.
Yeah.
And you're gonna pay more in commission than what you're gonna get for the property in some cases. That's what, that's what's happened in other towns. It's a very... It's a process that's playing out in other towns with some success, not some success. There's been issues with who's buying the properties, because, you know, when we have bids on properties, so city employees can't bid on them, but then when you go through a real estate agent, then you have city employees bidding on them, and so then you have the council that's deciding between offers, and some of them are, you know, employees or appointed or elected officials, that kind of thing. So it's not a sealed bid. See, before, we would do it, and there was a sealed bid. So you weren't really choosing winners or losers, people were submitting sealed bids, and we went from there. The other issue is some of these properties, they owe more on them than what they're worth, and certainly more than Mr. Eldridge had offered on these properties. He was offering like a hundred dollars.
Oh, I didn't see, I didn't, I didn't see the offer.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't have mattered, because we haven't, we're nowhere in the process to accept an offer anyway on these properties. And we're certainly not going to go through the process of having all of them appraised, you know, to be able to do with them what we, you know, want and pay the price.
But could we, I guess the question now comes up is if we're not gonna have them appraised, obviously they have a tax value attached to them, and that could be the flag point that we rally on.
Well, we have, we have to use like a brokerage price opinion, you know, if it's gonna be listed for sale. Like, if you were going to retain it for public use or something, or if you wanted to just say what you wanted to do with it, you'd have to have an appraise.
Okay.
You either have to go through the process, like, you've got a couple of different paths to compliance with that.
No, I understand.
The new statutes, yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you, I understand. We're just getting to the point where these are stacking up.
Yeah, and it's, and I don't think that it's going to change enough on the state level for us to be able to go back to the old days where we did like sealed bid. Because that's what some of, some of what's before the legislature is, well, why can't we go back to that? Because that kind of eliminated some of these like situations where, you know, you have the council... I mean, Tamara, Councilor Lovewell has sold real estate, so she knows, like, it's... Actually, when you're working as a buyer agent, you want to use that to your advantage, that people make decisions. So you try to use things to your advantage, well, I'm gonna do this with a property, I'm gonna do that, or I really need this house, or, you know, this means a lot to me. Like, you try to use the heartstrings to kind of cloud what the facts are sometimes. And you're, and you're gonna end up with that here when you start down that road, but I think down the road, we must go, so...
Because my heartstrings are saying, look at them stack up.
Yeah.
And we've been through this before.
This is tax money that we could be collecting.
Because way back, when we used to put these out, we used to put the minimum bid at twenty-five percent of the assessed value.
Right, right.
And a few would get them.
Exceed that.
Exceed that, but, and they stacked up even that. So we went back, and John knows, we went back and said, we gotta flush these properties.
Hundred and eighty, something like that.
It was crazy, it was a crazy amount, a lot of them, so we basically put the minimum bid out for what our price was, you know, or what... And then it came in more from that, and I got a couple of questions about that later in the, in the financials, but that's enough to labor that, if we can just put this on the... But you're gonna need a motion to reject it.
For now, we need to, we need to go ahead and make a motion on this.
To reject it, because we can't, I'll make a motion to reject the unsolicited bids on the tax-acquired property.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Kelly?
Hi.
Lovewell?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Terrio?
Hi.
Watson?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries.
So I've made a note for the next meeting to...
We can, we can discuss this a little more, but getting it here, so...
We don't have anything for item nine on the agenda. Item number ten, reports by staff and committees. We have the February and March financial, financial reports, and our finance director, Mr. Grant, is here.
Evening, Mayor, councilors, manager. On page fifty, seventy-five, I'll be presenting my report on page seventy-six. The February assets came in at thirteen million five oh nine, six hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Cash on hand through February was six million, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars and six cents. Twenty twenty-four tax receivables, three-quarters of the way down the page, we received sixty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Bringing our overall commitment down to seven hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty cents. As of the end of February, we collected ninety-one point nine percent of our total commitment, and that's eight tenths of a percent less than we had collected last year through February of twenty twenty-four. Moving over to the next page, on the bottom of the page, the liabilities ending for February twenty-eighth, we're at nine million, thirty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Moving over to page eighty-one, our fund balance came in at four million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred four dollars and forty-seven cents. Moving over to page eighty-three. My expenses for February came in at nine, and I apologize for the print, I didn't realize it was that faint when I printed it. February came in at nine hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. At the end of February, we didn't have our budget in, so compared to February of twenty twenty-four, that total was at seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. Our expenses rose from last February to this February about twenty percent. Moving over to page eighty-eight, our expenses for the month, or, excuse me, our revenue for the month came in at five hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and four cents. Compared to February of twenty twenty-four, we were at five hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents. So compared to February to February of twenty twenty-five, we were down one point two percent. Excise tax for the month came in at ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-three cents, and that was down seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, or seven point four percent compared to February of twenty twenty-four. Revenue sharing for the month of February came in at two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty cents. Compared to February of twenty twenty-four, we were up thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents, or above fifteen percent. Moving over to page ninety-three, the chart for February, we show your excise trend. And we were actually... And we were actually down for February 2025 to 2024 about seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Although in March, we were actually up twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars, which doesn't show on this graph, but I wanted to give you an update. So it kind of just fluctuated from one month to the next. Anybody have any questions on the February before I start the March financials?
I got a couple of questions, two or three here on this, and these will be answered by an email, but maybe. It's, I see 198, we have tax acquired property. How does that relate of sixty thousand dollars in that fund? I understand the rest of them, the seventeen and the eighteen, but then further on, we have thirty-three, or 37307. I assume that's tax acquired property, what that means, property remediation, remediation reserve, there's 12,000 there. And as I looked at this because of the packet, that 490 is another reserve account of about 31,000. How does that play into, and I understand the rest of it is a non-collected reserve, but.
The 490, I can tell you what that was. When we were doing bids by sealed bid.
Yeah.
We would take part of the sale and put it into a remedification to clean up light potentially.
Okay, I remember.
So that was just extra revenue that we earned from those bid sales, which we will no longer be able to do according to the new state regs.
I remember when we, if we made any, we put percentage back at the time for future.
Now we would have to give it back to the prior owner.
And then that'd be the same with 37307? Through the 12,000 on page seventy-nine.
I'm sorry, 373.
Zero seven.
Zero seven, that's a, that's the same, same deal. Maybe we could consolidate those. And then the 1980, tax acquired property, a hundred thousand, don't see any activity on that and that's approximately 60,000.
So that's what we have on the books for tax acquired property, taxes that are still on the books.
Okay, perfect, perfect. That's, that was my question. One other couple, just a couple of refunds here too. See, the new police station, we have the eighty-nine thousand.
What number are you looking at?
Three six seven oh nine, I assume that was to get the project rolling and hopefully we'll get that back out of the grant money or whatever loan money.
Yeah.
Is that how I see it? Okay, that's fine on that. And a trailer park reserve, sorry, I'm being picky tonight. I see 44,000 in there, we don't have a trailer park anymore. Just to point that out, maybe that could be consolidated and used somewhere else, somewhere useful.
So that, the mobile home park is part of the airport, so it'll really become part of the airport reserve.
Okay, okay, perfect. And then one, a couple more, one more thing here. I don't want to talk about the relief funds, I know about that. I see on like Thursdays on Sweden, I only see a balance of like 105, but there must be other funds somewhere else for that.
So sometimes we collect money down there, that's what that comes from. Like if we sell t-shirts or something, that's what, that's what.
That's what that line is, okay, it's not, because I'm going, a hundred and five dollars isn't going to run.
No, 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 that's just money that we take in, just miscellane, we have to account for it somewhere. So every dollar that comes through anywhere here, it has to go somewhere. So that's how we have some little accounts here.
That's not what we approved.
It's all the money people paid the donkey when the donkey.
Yeah, it's like the donkey.
It's going up. That's just the questions I had on it, so. I got a few, I got a couple others, but they're just, just by that conversation, so that's all I have. And I'm, that only, well.
So, can I ask a question to piggyback on that then? That the remediation reserves or whatever from, those are from previous times when we could take that money, but we still can access that money, correct? It's still, I mean, if it's there, we don't have, we don't lose it or it's a reserve.
Thirty-one and twelve.
So that's something we can still use to light or whatever? I mean, is that, that's.
Potentially.
So what else would you do, just leave it there forever? I mean, what, I mean, no, I didn't mean like, that's not a relief, I mean, what else would you do? So when we have to go down the path of doing things the way the state wants us to do, we're going to have more expenses than we're ever going to get for income and that money's going to go fast.
Mm-hmm, got you.
That's why I was questioning it, because of this, and when I was looking through, so.
Anything further on February? Questions? Okay, what are the wishes of the council on February?
Motion to accept the February financials as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Kelly?
Hi.
Lovell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to March.
March starts on page ninety-four, I'll be presenting from ninety-five and on. Assets on hand through the month of March, twelve million, five hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents. Cash on hand through the end of March was five million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-six cents. Twenty twenty-four tax receivable, we received a hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and seven cents, bringing our overall commitment down to six hundred and eighty thousand, nine eighty-nine thirteen. At this point, we've collected ninety-three point one percent of our overall commitment and that's down 1.2% compared to 2024. Next page, liabilities ended at eight million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Moving over to page a hundred, we have the fund balance, four million, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Moving over to page a hundred and two, expenses for the month of March came in at eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. We have the budget posted in March, so our budget expense, our yearly expenses to budget through the first three months came in at nineteen point four seven, so that's down 5.5% to the budget. Moving on to page 107, the revenues, revenues for the month came in at three hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents. Compared to our budget for the first three months, we were down 11.5%. We're at thirteen point four five. Excise tax of the month came in at a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-four cents. We are under budget year-to-date by 4.6%. Revenue sharing came in at seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents. We are under budget one, nine tenths of one percent or about 20,000 dollars for the first three months of the year. Moving over to page 112, I have the investment report for the first quarter. We renewed two CDs, the Margaret Shaw CD. I renewed that for five years because I got a great interest rate of 4%. I also renewed Barbara Brewer for five years at the 4% as well. Interest rates are starting to go down, so I wanted to take advantage of the high interest rates for the extended period. On the next page, we have our graph for the month that shows the excise, sorry, I'm sorry, the overall expenses to our budget now that our budget was entered. And like I said, we were down 5.5%, roughly 748,000 dollars through the first three months.
Questions on March?
I would like to interject a comment. There was in this evening as well as other times, there's been comments made about the fact that we maintained the budget at its original setting without doing the 10% cuts. I would like to go on record again stating that we all agreed that we did that for the sole purpose of seeing where the money would land, knowing full well we were going to have to go back and do some hard cuts. But rather than prematurely bleeding out, we decided that as long as we were on paper, that we would allow it to run and then fix it as we went. So I think that's important to keep repeating that to our constituents so that they know that we're not sleeping at the wheel.
Yep, absolutely. You're absolutely right, yep.
Because we can always cut once we set the budget.
I think we made that pretty clear at the meeting.
Yeah, but I heard, I've heard it a couple of times downtown as well as once this evening and I can understand the frustration. I just want to continually repeat, we're not pretending it's not there. We know what's coming.
Yep.
To the best of our knowledge.
Anything further on March? Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Motion to accept the March financials as presented.
A second.
Go ahead.
No, she already did.
Somebody, somebody did.
Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion? Kelly?
Hi.
Lovell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you so much, Carl, for your patience.
You should have got in the picture.
Item number 10B, committee reports, there is an airport and police station report in here. Councilor Begley is not here. He did include some information about the airport advisory committee meeting and you've got that in your packet, so I won't read that all today. The public safety building committee also met Thursday, April 24th to finalize decisions so that we could put the project out to bid, which we have done. So the bid process will work as such that there will be a pre-bid meeting on May 21st, 2025 at 1:00 PM and that will be held in person and also via Zoom. The bid opening will be on June 12th, 2025 at 2:00 PM in person and via Zoom and there will be information on the city's website for anyone that's interested in that.
Thank you. Projects coming to fruition.
It sure is. So happy. Okay, item 10C is the city manager's report.
Um, first, I, yeah, so this is on page 116. If you're following along at home. So first, a couple of thank yous. Jan Murkison is here and she's been very helpful with getting the police station project out for bid. And honestly, I feel like Jan saves my bacon at least once a day on something. On that and other projects we have going on because she seems to know where all this stuff is. So thanks, Jan, so much. And I also have to send a thanks to Mayor Boma and also Christina King Gibson for helping with the show choir and the jazz choir memos. So a few, like last month, we honored our basketball teams and there are articles everywhere online for me to gather little tidbits of information. And when Mayor Boma let me know that the show choir and jazz choir had earned gold in the state competitions and we were going to have them here, I'm searching feverishly for anything online that I can pick from to write the memos to go along in the packet and there's nothing. And I don't have social media either. So I, it was very helpful that Mayor Boma and also Christina. Christina, I feel like saves my bacon at least once a week too because she has all the answers to things and she sent me some screenshots of some social media posts that helped fill in. And as a parent, her and Mayor Boma both talked about how the community has been so supportive of the music programs and local businesses with donating items that they've needed and others in the community pitching in for the rhythm section and things like that. Thanks to all the people that are always helping me all the time because I need lots of help. So we have lots of updates. I have an updated grant for updates page in the packet. I did find out that, so the EPA Circa Division who does like emergency response, they've been working in the steam plant. They have not demobilized even though they've been done for quite a while and they were supposed to come tomorrow and Wednesday and I heard they're not coming until the week after, but I've literally been hearing that since like January. So we can't, because of the way things work with the EPA, we can't work on our Brownfields grant at the diesel plant until they're out of the steam plant. So we're still working with that. But again, you know, EPA, like a lot of federal agencies are under a lot of pressure. They've had a lot of staff that have turned over because of all the uncertainty down there and we are very grateful for all the assistance they've given us. And this week will be May and everyone knows that I've been waiting for May because that's when we will find out if we got our second Brownfields grant for the demolition of the steam plant. So we're waiting for that. Our project at the Caribou Public Library is going well. The asbestos removal is complete over there. There's been a lot of people actually come in to tour the building since this tour part. Like people are fascinated by that and Councilor Watson is liaison to the library and I think everyone's very excited for things to happen.
It's awesome and they're still providing a unique, high-level service throughout all that construction. But you're right, it's like up close and personal with construction, something you don't normally get.
Yeah, and so they want to have a dance or something in there because it's all cleared out.
Yeah.
And you know, you organize a lot of dances at the DFW, so.
All I'm going to say there is that the enthusiasm level with that crew is, is hard to keep pace with. They're a very good bunch.
Yeah, no, we have an amazing, amazing library. So Northern Border Regional Commission, we have finally received our final notice to proceed. We had a riverfront meeting scheduled for last week, which we had to cancel, which was my fault. And so we will be going forward with the aspects of the MBRC grant. Our congressionally directed spending requests, we have talked about that here with the police station. And again, Jan has been so helpful to the committee and I, we, I actually saw the ad come through today, so it's going to be in the weekend, Bay Harbor Daily. It's going to be in the Arostric Republic, I mean, the county, the county now. And we'll have it, you know, advertised in as many places as we can to get as many bids as possible. Also with the fire station, that project is moving forward. They had a walkthrough for interested people that might want to bid on that project. Those bids are due in May. Today was the day I had to have all the questions answered by the companies and that was posted before it had to be done. The DOT, the public partnership initiative, we had a Zoom on that, that's going forward. The Community Development Block Grant, I have a call tomorrow with them. We've submitted everything, so I think tomorrow I'll be getting the go-ahead on that as well. On the next two pages is the spreadsheet of economic projects and other administrative projects. Some of them we have already updated you because they have to do with some of the grants that we have. One of the things that four years ago, when the city was between managers and the council had asked me to work as interim manager and the seven folks that were on the council at that time, I asked them, okay, for just this summer, when I'm just being the interim, that before you hire your real person, joke's on me. At the time, I said, so what is the one project all seven of you can agree on that you don't want the ball to get dropped during the interim? And all seven said broadband. That was the big priority four years ago, was to somehow get a build-out to all the rural areas of Caribou. And I'm very pleased to say, in some places, now you have two choices out in the country, three if you count Starlink, which is a big change from four years ago. So Consolidated has built out their, the area that they were doing, which is not the whole city. So they had some contracts through the government, through the ARDOF program and they built out to get to those. The Charter Spectrum build-out was through the Main Connectivity Authority and that's complete. However, when they started the project, they found that there were eight more addresses that were not on the original list, so they're seeking additional funding from MCA for those. But it's amazing that four years ago, that was a really major priority of this council and the council can be very satisfied in themselves that they got that accomplished. So events and marketing, the dates for Thursdays on Sweden Street, Sweden Street, which we've been asked this several times, people are getting very excited for this and I know that Gary Markey has been working hard to get the entertainment ready for that and those are June 12th and 26th, July 10th and 24th, and August 7th. The Spring Runoff Canoe and Kayak Race is May 4th and the Citywide Yard Sale is May 16th through the 18th. For the ARPA funds, we had to have those. May sixteenth through the eighteenth. For the ARPA funds, we had to have those obligated by the end of December, which we did. The portal opened for me to report that, um, April one and that, and it closes April thirtieth. And all of that is done. All the reporting is done. The riverfront master plan, again, M B R C, um, we do have our final notice to proceed, so we'll be putting that out soon. The planning board met on April tenth, their next meeting in May. They'll be, they have a couple of public hearings on some blight ordinances and more work on the comp plan. And for administrative approvals, rubbish hauler and taxi cab renewals are done, are due by April thirtieth. Please don't make me send you a letter. Because believe it or not, it's code enforcement that has to send letters. We discovered that last year. And I don't know the logic behind that, but it's literally on my to-do list to check with Danielle to see who is on the naughty list and is getting a letter. So additionally, we have been talking a lot about the tax bill and, um, earlier in public comment, there were discussions about the fact that we have a compound tax rate, which includes the municipal spending, the school and the county. And I know it was suggested everyone send out their own bills that in statute, the community has to send out a tax bill which includes the school. So, um, that's not something we can do. That was something that prior councils had, you know, looked at and we, it's in statute. We, we're just stuck with that method of delivering the bill. So in twenty-four, um, four hundred and ten dollars, if your tax bill was a thousand dollars, it's four hundred and ten funded the city, a hundred dollars funded the county, and four hundred and ninety funded the school department. So we, I have information, it's in the packet. If somebody has further questions, they can ask, uh, ask me about this. This was something we were getting questions about. So reconciling the municipal tax bill and the Maine Department of Education, E D two seventy-nine, and what their mill expectation, uh, expectation is, they use state valuation, which also includes some of the reimbursements that we get from the state and not necessarily how much taxable valuation that we send out every year. So we have, um, that explanation is in here. It's also an explanation of when voters in Caribou vote on the school budget. Um, so May, uh, May twenty-first is when they have the district budget meeting. And that's when they have to introduce all the articles. Article twelve, we have to pass that because that is the funding that's required to leverage the state money. Article fourteen is where the RSU raises funds over and above what the state requires. And that, that is the one that's been growing every year, is that one. Um, I did ask the question at the last school board meeting about that. And all I was told was that Van Buren is the only school district that doesn't have additional funds in article fourteen, which I realize that you're not going to hit the target exactly when you're, when you're funding the school. But it would be nice to maybe better understand, uh, everything that's going into article fourteen. So at the end, uh, when we are actually calculating our municipal tax rate, this is just a little spreadsheet that I use because their year is different from our year. So we have to take six months from each side. And that's going to calculate what we had. And this is like from last year. And I did that for that, those three pages for the school department. They had some questions about why our numbers are different. Meanwhile, the county is also working on their budget and they, um, they also have a public hearing. They, um, then they will send out our bills to us too. So I have several pages that our county administrator was kind enough to send to me about, you know, what he's been sending to the county administrators and also has an overview of where their individual county budgets are too. So I'm not going to read through all that. It's, it is in your packet. Just as kind of a sneak peek to where they're seeing challenges, which is a lot of it is the same thing that we're dealing with, which is salary and benefits, the cost of electricity, the top, the cost of fuel, the cost of vehicles, cost of insurance, all of those, um, that are increasing for everyone, both at work and at home. And, um, again, if someone has questions, I can certainly get those to the county administrator. If someone has any specific questions about the county budget, which is ten percent of our municipal tax bill. And I would entertain any questions anyone has from the council.
Yes. I would like to thread a needle here and say that I think teachers and county workers are all respected employees and we value their efforts. I would ask that they take a little ex, I'm trying to get this on the record. I would ask that they take a little extra time this year and tighten their belts like the rest of us. Uh, it feels like we're eating tuna fish on steel crackers and some of these folks want a lobster and steak dinner. And I think that's a realistic way to look at folks and say, hey, you know, we're trying, you know, but maybe they need to start showing up to vote so that they can help turn the tide and make it a little more responsible. I think to assess blame on this group for something that's beyond our control is convenient, but it doesn't solve a solution. You know, we're spending a lot of time here going back and forth. There's email traffic like crazy. We're doing the best we can. It would be nice if two other groups could help step up to the plate and maybe just pierce their bubble a little bit and see what's going on. Yeah. So that's all I wanted added.
Thank you. Um, my only question would be, can we, is that on the website, that information? It's in the packet?
Uh, well, I mean, it's in the packet, which is online. But I, do you want me to put it somewhere that's easier to find?
If it's easy to do, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it isn't easy for me, but luckily Bethany Zell is fantastic at doing those things.
You mean.
She gets me out of jams all the time too. Including Bethany in my thank yous too.
Okay.
But I can definitely do that. So I can put it maybe with the budget information or something.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, item number twelve is under new business ordinances and resolutions. Um, we have it twelve A and that is the June ten, twenty twenty-five RS two thirty-nine budget validation election motions that we need to make this evening. That's on page one thirty of your packet.
Is that just, oh, is that the one we have to, just, we're approving?
Yes.
Opening time?
Exactly.
And then you got to countersign the warrants.
Yes. What are the wishes of the council?
The warrants are next time.
The warrants are next time? Okay. I'll make a motion. We set the start time at eight A M. Point Daniel Ressat, selection warden, Christina Drinkle, Andrew, Amber Medor is deputy wardens for the June tenth, two thousand twenty-five election.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Apple.
Oops.
And the inch bigger camera. They're up there.
Hold on.
Not in the budget to replace it.
It is not in the budget to replace it. We'll tape it. I know, I must be getting really strong. Okay. Item twelve B is the Community Resilience Partnership Resolution. That's on page one thirty-one.
One thirty-one.
Yep, one thirty-one.
I didn't look at that one.
In twenty twenty-one, the city of Caribou, along with the towns of Washburn and Fort Fairfield, participated in a pilot program for the Community Resilience, Resilience Partnership, an initiative of the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation in the Future. During the process, many community stakeholders participated in a series of Zoom meetings facilitated by the G O P I F and the Nature Conservancy. At the end, the city received a grant to try the Text My Gov Community Notification Messaging Service, and the Caribou Fire Department was able to upgrade their emergency response system to I Am Responding. Something that came out of the pilot program was that the communities could enroll in the partnership and become eligible for community action grants to undertake additional planning efforts or to implement the priorities identified with the Community Resilience Self-Evaluation. This was a step that the city of Caribou did not complete. The city of Caribou is hoping to take advantage of grant opportunities in the future, so a resolution needs to be adopted. And we do have a copy of our resolution here. Would you like me to read that? Okay, everyone has a copy of it in your packet. Okay, so what are the wishes of the council?
Move to accept resolution, that number, resolution number two, two thousand twenty-five series, resolution of the city of, of the Caribou City Council to enroll in the state of Maine Community Resilience Partnership. It's only a second resolution we have. It's pretty good. Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. More gentle that time. Okay.
Too late.
Item twelve C is a date change for the city council's, um, May regular meeting. That's on page one thirty-three.
Is that because of the holidays?
No, well, it's on a Tuesday because of the holidays.
Yeah, that's why. That's why we're changing it.
Yeah. But it's, it was on Monday, the nineteenth, because I like to keep them on Mondays. But then because the district budget meeting is the twenty-first, we got to have our meeting after the district budget meeting. So we're still gonna, we're gonna be stuck with having it on a Tuesday.
So what are the wishes of the council in terms of changing the meeting to May twenty-seventh?
I'll read. Make a motion to change the date of the May twenty twenty-fifth city council meeting from Monday, May nineteenth to twenty twenty-five to Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Kelly?
Thank you.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You give us some trouble.
Okay, reports and discussion by mayor and council members. I'm going to start with Councilor Watson. Oh, shit, chatter's over here. Maybe I should start on the other end.
No, go ahead. Where we got now?
Do you have anything to report?
Um, no, at this point in time.
Okay.
Um, no report except I want a second and third and fourth. Jan, thank you so much over this whole process. I, we see light at the end of the tunnel. And without you, I, I think I would be ninety. So, so thank you, thank you, thank you. You have no idea because I don't know what I was doing.
It's like a skipping rock. I echo that as well. It just kind of bounces along because I, as Joan said, have no clue when I'm looking at some of that. What I'm even looking at is foreign to me. So we really appreciate it.
No quizzes, no tests or anything.
Deputy mayor?
Oh, just a couple of things, uh, to go along with this budget. I don't, there was some people were panicking. They were talking about eight, nine, ten mil increase. I don't believe it's going to be that bad. It's not going to be perfect. I think we can get this closer so everybody hopefully can get off panic mode. I've heard a lot of people just saying, oh, what's going to happen here? Um, I'll talk one more thing about the budget. I still think we should be, um, steering towards a fiscal year. That's a conversation for another day. And, uh, circus this weekend.
Yay.
And then you're going to have great shows over there. And if the least, you can kind of make fun of me while I'm over there working. So, so if you get an opportunity to go over there, there's all kinds of aerial acts.
What days is that and where is it located?
Uh, it's going to be at the Forum in Prescott. Uh, there's a show Thursday night, two on Friday and three on Saturday. So Bangor was the previous, was last weekend, so.
Stop by and harass the Shriner.
Yeah, good. I'll take it. Or harass someone else. Whatever. I don't know what I'll be doing for a job, Barry. So I just want to put a, put a plug out for those guys.
Thank you. Councilor Lovewell?
Yeah. Well, there's been a lot of good news, I think. We've got a lot of gold coming in our way. I think that's been pretty exciting. We had a really, really, really nice day today. And, um, I went out for something for work and took two hours to get back. So that was fun. Yeah. But just looking at, you know, through these reports by Penny and seeing all these things coming to fruition that have been in the works, I, I hope the community can, can look and see that things are, are getting done and that this council and this manager and the people that work hard for the city are really trying to make this a better place. So, um, and we're trying to do it on budget too. So we're, we're trying to do all the things, but there's a lot of things to be done. So I just want to commend Penny for all the things that she does and all the different committees too, for, and the community members, obviously. Jan, we'll say it again, um, for all the hard work that's being done, um, just by volunteerism, you know, that's, that's amazing to me. So enjoy the sun and all the events that are coming up.
Thank you. Counselor Kelly, did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, I yell at the TVs.
Thank you.
Beautiful here too.
Yeah, beautiful.
Yeah, beautiful here for sure.
Okay. So our next regular council meeting will be May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. We do not have an executive session this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Discussion. Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening.
Turn off your.
Turn off your microphones.